Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 12, 2024. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Next, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith.
Thank you. Because we have County Council here and the sheriff, we're going to do the St. Patrick's Day Parade proclamation first. So everybody come forward that's here for the St. Patrick's Day. Oh, and we have St. Patrick's. You might see a bolt of lightning come down here any time. Dirk, come up. All you guys come up. Families, everyone, come up. You want to go first? We'll have County Council go first. Do you want to come up? Yeah, I'm going to do that.
Yeah. Well, we'll share the mic on about cooperating.
Want to get cleaned up here a little bit?
Put the mic up.
It's an honor and privilege to be here. But equally, equally important is that we're celebrating another Allegheny County Pittsburgh, City of Pittsburgh tradition. I was married into an Irish family. Tough, tough bunch of people. But they had principles. They went to church. They did all the right things. The O'Briens, the Quarks, the Millers, the Clockertys, these were all part of a family that I enjoyed. Okay, without any further ado, Allegheny County certainly appreciates working with the city of Pittsburgh and giving us this opportunity to recognize a few people. I am going to need some visual aids. This goes to the St. Patrick's Day Committee. Since its inception, the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee has been the driving force behind the annual parade, coordinating and managing all efforts in bringing the community together to ensure the success of this treasured event. Pittsburgh's annual St. Patrick's Day Parade celebrates Pittsburgh's Irish heritage and is normally attended by 200,000-plus people, all Irish, for a day. The parade is one of the oldest and largest St. Patrick's Days in the nation, parades, that is. The 2024 St. Patrick's Day Parade will feature numerous marching bands, including bands, floats, several police, fire, and emergency services, elected leaders, imagine that, along with many groups from Pittsburgh's Irish community. Allegheny County Council commends the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee and the parade sponsors, Sue Britton Associates, Pittsburgh Penguins, Rome Monument, The White Family, AOH Division Nine, Allegheny County Airport Authority, Baird Financial, Schneider Brothers Auto, Skyworks Equipment Rental, WILPA CPAs and Advisors, Moran and Moran Attorneys at Law, PNC, Senator Devlin Robinson, and Tribuchek Consulting and Teamsters. I'm sorry. I'm glad you got it this year, not me. That's okay. And I got A's in English and literature. So would the head of the parade committee please step forward?
That's me.
There you are. Are we doing pictures?
Yeah, we'll get you lots of photos.
Okay. Thank you so much. And this is usually what we do.
Congratulations. I usually don't get to go to the County Council meeting because we have a parade meeting on the same day that they do their thing. So it's a pleasure for me to have the county with us here today. You know, I just said to the councilwoman, I said, look, we have like intergovernmental cooperation here. We're in the city-county building. It's a great thing. My name is Mac. I'm the chairman of the parade committee. The parade has undergone a bunch of growth recently with the Penguins joining us. We've sort of changed the name of the parade now. It's called America's Grand St. Patrick's Day Parade, powered by the Pittsburgh Penguins. So the sponsorship thing is gone. Where the money goes is we give it to worthy causes, Irish causes, non-Irish causes, just anybody that needs money. We try to redistribute the wealth. It's our goal to have the greatest parade each year. This year, St. Patrick intervened. He is the Hibernian of the Year for the AOH. Rob Tierney, who's been a great friend of mine for 20-plus years, is the Grand Marshal. We hit a home run with that one. Miss Smiling Irish Eyes, you know, all beautiful young ladies that have accomplished quite a bit.
It's not me.
She was Miss Smiling Irish Eyes, 19. I don't want to say. But so I appreciate the city and the county inviting us down here for this day. Do you want to hear from anybody else?
Well, I'm going to do one more for the...
Grand Marshal and the Hibernian, or?
Well, we're going to do something for the education and charity.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There again, I want to thank the city, City Council, for giving us this opportunity. The Irish Society for Education and Charity, Inc. Since 1992, the Irish Society for Education and Charity, Inc. has provided sponsorship, leadership, and guidance to the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee in its efforts to organize and execute what has referred to as the nation's second-largest St. Patrick's Day Parade. The organization also supports Pittsburgh's Irish community by awarding scholarships to local Irish students and by making donations to area groups and causes. Allegheny County Council commends the Irish Society for Education and Charity for their passionate and tireless efforts to support Pittsburgh's Irish community and thanks them all for their numerous contributions. Now, think about it. Where would we be without charity organizations? We have to be able to get out and then serve the underserved. So who's the head of the charity committee? My man.
Good seeing you again.
I see you too. Yeah, if you care. It's up to council. I don't want to pick up too much time.
Make it your home.
Bless the Lord a brief here. You know, the St. Patrick's Day Parade started in Pittsburgh in 1870. It went to 1904, and then it was a hiatus until David Lawrence, the beloved mayor, and then governor, started back up in 1950. Since then, even during COVID, we have had a parade. It may not have been as big in size, but we've always had a parade. And Bob, you said that 200,000? I think that's going to be an underestimate this year, especially since I just looked at my phone and it said it's going to be 60 degrees and sunny on Saturday. So we're looking for that. On behalf of the Irish Society for Education, our name says it all. Where would we be without education and helping those that need help the most? And I think the city and the county exemplifies that. So I want to thank you all for this opportunity. God bless, and let's go Irish. Now, I'm going to read the name and the title, and then I'll give them this fancy-bound proclamation. The St. Patrick's Day Committee announced Miss Smiling Irish Eyes' queen is Madeline Burns. The 2024 Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maiden is Brooke Ireland-McCardle. The 2024 Miss Smiling Eyes, Irish Eyes Court Maiden is Anna Catherine Hanley. And the parade committee announced the 2024 Allegheny County AOH Hibernian of the Year, Michael Moog. And last but not least, the St. Patrick's Day 24 Grand Marshal is Robert Tierney. Thank you so much, City Council, Teresa.
Thank you. Do you want to stay for the proclamations? We'll get photos together. And we have a little reception in the back if anybody wants to go back.
I'd like to have my picture taken. Thank you.
Yeah. I only have one proclamation, but lots of copies. And I want to say, Councilman Coghill is here somewhere with us. Well, I'll be honest, when, after Councilman O'Connor was no longer here, because he did the proclamations every year, they asked if Councilman Coghill could do them. I'm like, wait a minute. I'm the one who's married to an Irish guy and has Irish kids, so I'm reading that proclamation. No, seriously. So I asked for it. But I am really proud of a lot of the Oakland Irish people that are here, that I've known since before I was little. You can come up later when you'll say a few words, I'm sure. But I also want to mention that Melissa Rosser, who also works for City Council, Missy, come stand up here with everybody, has been a member of the AOH, correct, for Division 11 for many, many years. Matter of fact, when she ran for City Council, you came in second, right, in an eight-person race or something like that?
I got my race.
She would be sitting here if it were not for so many people in that race, because she got so many votes, and I think it was, they were all Irish. Just say. Whereas, America's Grand St. Patrick's Day Parade, powered by the Pittsburgh Penguins, will be held on Saturday, March 16th, celebrating Pittsburgh's Irish heritage. And whereas, the parade will be led by this year's Grand Marshal, Robert Tierney, a native of Dublin. Rob is a member of AOH Division 32, Sean McBride, out of Carnegie, and served as the Vice President of the Ireland Institute of Pittsburgh and in several capacities with the Gaelic Athletic Association, which, by the way, you have a boxing match coming up, correct, for the Donnybrook on the north side of the prairie, correct? So we'll let you talk to Councilman Wilson, too, about that. Whereas, among the most honored participants in 2024, Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Queen Madeline Burns and Miss Smiling Irish Eyes Court Maidens Brooke Ireland-McCardle, who has District Two roots with Kevin Paulus, and Anna Catherine Hanley. And whereas, Miss Burns' daughter of Gary and Regina Burns of Springdale is a Dean's List junior at Robert Morris University, where she is majoring in public relations and advertising with minors in graphic design and business. She has been involved in LAOH Division 23 since she was five years old and comes from a long family history of the Pittsburgh Irish community. And whereas, Court Maiden Brooke Ireland-McCardle of Baldwin is a Dean's List freshman at Pennsylvania Western University Clarion, where she majors in biology with a pre-medical concentration. Court Maiden Anna Catherine Hanley of Swickley is a junior at Quaker Valley High School, where she is a three-year starter on the girls' varsity soccer team. And whereas, also among the honored participants is the 2024 Hibernian of the Year, Michael Moog, also St. Patrick, who is also portraying St. Patrick himself in the parade. Michael has been a member of the AOH Division Nine Oakland Irish for more than 20 years, serving in many capacities. He is currently a member of the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee and AOH, LAOH, National Convention Committee. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby thank all the organizers and participants in the St. Patrick's Day Parade and welcome all Pittsburgh, and we welcome all Pittsburgh residents to be Irish for the day. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 10 through the 17th, 2024, to be St. Patrick's Day Parade Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Congratulations.
Who wants to go first? And I also want to mention that we have the sheriff here, Sheriff Kraus in the back. Sheriff, do you want to come forward, too, and say a few words? Do you want to say a few words, too? Yeah. And then we'll have everyone else talk.
Good morning. I'm Sheriff Kevin Kraus of Allegheny County. Most importantly, I want to congratulate Mr. Tierney as this year's Grand Marshal. I want to congratulate Miss Smiling Irish Eyes for her achievements and her team. I want to thank the committee. I want to recognize the hard work that everybody does to make this parade possible and the number of events that precede the event and the parade. And it's just truly amazing to see all these people come together, you know, residents, visitors of our communities come together to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. And all the credit goes to these people standing here. So I'm very proud to participate and thank you for all your efforts. And thank you and have a nice day.
Who comes next? Tell me. You call the shots, okay? You're the president, okay? Oh, well, I love her.
Hi, Teresa. Teresa and I, our families go back to St. Agnes's in Oakland many years ago.
One of us was young.
Look who has the white hair. So want to thank everybody for being here. You got a chance to meet our girls. I think we did a terrific job, as usual. I just want to take this opportunity before City Council to let you know some of the great things that the community does to promote the parade, but particularly Miss Smiling Irish Eyes. Teamsters Local 249 has all through the years, and I started off doing this in 1985, anything I've ever needed, the Teamsters say go and get, and they pay for it. This year, in the parade, as in past parades, you will notice a beautiful Cinderella carriage. The Teamsters pay for that for the girls, as well as a great big heavy duty wagon that takes the former Miss Smiling Irish Eyes. The Irish Societies for Education and Charities, each year gives each one of the girls, now that's all three of them get it, $500 educational scholarship to help with the costs of their education. And finally, the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee itself pays for all the extras that we need, and that's the flowers and the crowns and the sashes. And you add all that up, and you'll see that comes to quite a bit of money. But without these sponsors, we would not be able to put on the first class day that we, or week, actually, that we are able to give these girls. So thank you all and see you Saturday.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of City Council, members of County Council, friends, good afternoon. Firstly, I would like to thank the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, the Society for Education and Charity, for bestowing on me this great honor. Thanks to City and County Council for this proclamation and continuing to support the Irish diaspora here in Western PA. This Saturday at 10:00 a.m., we'll see 20,000 Irish Americans and our friends from other ethnic groups come together to celebrate Ireland's very rich heritage. 500,000 people, I believe, are expected to appear in the streets of this great city in a show of community strength, with a further 100,000 people watching the live stream on WTAE. But we don't just celebrate Ireland. When we gather together like this, we are acknowledging and honoring all of the people that came before us, that paved the way, that lit the flame, that built the burg. The Irish, to quote local Irish musician Mark Dignam, traded in the four green fields for these three rivers of steel. We found a life. We found jobs. We found friends and family here. We traveled to this great city from afar, built it, invigorated it, and watched it take its place amongst the greatest cities in the world. The granting of a proclamation for a grand marshal is not about one person. It's symbolic of all the people that have contributed to the civic, business, and culture of this region. We stand on the shoulders of those that have come before us and ensured that our arts, our language, and sports are kept alive and preserved well for future generations to experience and love. We will continue to work together to ensure the preservation of that culture and the future success of this great city and county. As the Irish saying goes, "There is no strength without unity." Ghanair and Bohair Liv made the roads right up to meet you. Thank you.
St. Patrick, how about Miss Smiling Irish Eyes, too?
They're more important than I.
No, 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 no. Don't say I said that, okay? But you are a woman, so come on.
Hi. I just want to say thank you for having us today. We feel very honored to be here today and to hold these titles that have such a rich legacy and represent the Irish heritage here in Pittsburgh. It means a lot to me, my fellow court members. So thank you for the honor and thank you to the committee and Peggy for selecting us and giving us this really awesome opportunity. So thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to thank City Council for hosting us today and County Council for coming in. Made it a lot easier for all of us here. But thank you and hope you have a great Irish week with the rest of us. Thanks.
That staff was making me a little bit nervous. Do council members want to come up for the photo? Everyone? Councilman Macy? I'm going to say, add, the District Two is well represented in this group. Thank you for all that you do. There's a reception in the back. Members who want to go back, there's a reception in the back. There's a reception in the back if you want to go. Thank you. You can go, you have to go this way, I think, unless, unless somebody takes you back that way.
Teresa, you have another one, don't you?
I do have one more.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
It's okay. Will the folks, Adam and the folks from Women in Data Science, please come forward? You can go to the conference room. Yeah. Whichever way somebody takes you. I don't... Well, it is Women's History Month. Do the women, councilwoman, come up for this one? Councilwoman Gross, you want to come up for this? Councilwoman Strasburger and Warwick? Let me just say, we have a women's caucus on City Council because we understand the importance of women collaborating and working together. And so I want to thank, although I do want to thank Adam Cosgrove for presenting this to us every year, asking us to acknowledge the great work that you're doing in the city of Pittsburgh. And I can just say, Adam actually started the dog park with me in Mount Washington.
Never living that down.
It's a great thing. It's a great thing. It brings a lot of people to our district and to the area. So, but Adam does a lot in the community, so I want to thank Adam. He also serves on the board for the, what is it, the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. So thank you to Mayor Ganey for appointing you to that. Okay. Whereas, but now this is all about you. Whereas, Women in Data Science Pittsburgh is back at Carnegie Mellon University for its sixth annual conference, to be held Thursday through Friday, March 15th and 16th. And whereas, the conference takes place against the backdrop of Pittsburgh, a vibrant hub for a community of experts in statistics, data analysis, and machine learning, who are dedicated to pioneering new methodologies and techniques, spearheading cutting-edge data science research. And whereas, WIDS Pittsburgh is the only women-centric data analytics conference in Western Pennsylvania, the only one. The conference is open to the public and is free to high school students, providing them an opportunity to see the possibilities in this field. And whereas, the purpose of WIDS is to inspire and educate data science worldwide, regardless of gender, and support women in the field. The conference features exclusively women speakers from academia and industry. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Women in Data Science for providing inspiration, education, community, and support for women in the field of data science. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 15th and 16th, 2024, to be Women in Data Science Days in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve? All those in favor say aye. Can you oppose? Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you. You speak first.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. My name is Rebecca Nugent. I'm the head-
I'm the head of the Department of Statistics and Data Science at Carnegie Mellon, and I'm one of the members of the WIDS Pittsburgh at Carnegie Mellon 2024 Committee. Thank you so much to the city council for their ongoing support. We have this saying that started the very first conference that we did. The saying was, "If data science were a country, Pittsburgh would be the capital." And I think that holds true today with the incredible higher education, just environment that we have with Carnegie Mellon, Pitt, Duquesne, and the other higher ed accredited institutions that we have here, alongside an incredibly thriving tech and innovation ecosystem that just keeps growing and growing every year, alongside the hospitals and the medical fields, et cetera. I mean, there's never been a better time or a better place to do data science than Pittsburgh in 2024. And so, we really appreciate everyone's support and we want to invite everyone to attend this weekend's events on Friday and Saturday, March 15th and 16th, at Carnegie Mellon University. I would like to introduce the chair of the committee, Jessie Albright.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jessie Albright. I, in my role here at Carnegie Mellon, I work in our Statistics and Data Science Department, also an alum. So, what I really wanted to say today is, it is an absolutely fantastic event, but it doesn't happen without a really good synergy of students, industry partners, alumni, sponsors, everybody coming together to make a wonderful ecosystem to celebrate data science and to knowledge share. That's a big part of this and make connections that can really propel the studies that we have within data science. So, with that being said, I'd also like to make sure, I would be amiss if I didn't thank our sponsors. This year, our highlight sponsors are Dexcom as well as Highmark Health. So, yes, I hope we see some of you this weekend at the event. And thank you, council, for this honor and thank you for the rest of our team, our committee, for all the hard work. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything, councilwoman? Nothing? Thank you. I just want to say, I'm proud to have the women up here for the Women's Caucus. And I do want to say, back when I first started the Women's Caucus, one of our colleagues, who's no longer here, said to me, "Why do you need to start a Women's Caucus?" You know, men don't do it. And I said, "Yeah, because men don't need a caucus to take money out of the budget. Women do." So, I'm proud to stand here with them. But I'll also ask, because we have such amazing colleagues on council that actually do support a lot of the women, if you'd all want to come up, too. Maybe I shouldn't. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Councilwoman Gross, I believe?
Can everybody for the Youth Steering Committee for Humane Action Pittsburgh and the Pollinator Gardens come on up in front? And council, I have cosponsors on here, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Charlin, do you want to join us up here, too? Yes, absolutely.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Oh, get out. Where? Oh, get out. Good luck.
Great. We're so lucky to have such engaged community organizations. And Humane Action Pittsburgh has the Youth Steering Committee that are working on pollinator gardens. And you know that we've worked really hard on urban ag as a city council and on issues about kind of helping to restore our environments and food justice. And we wouldn't have food without pollinators. So, just briefly, whereas planting certain flowering plants, especially native plants, that attract beneficial insects to pollinate vegetables, trees, and plants is known as a pollinator garden. I'm going to read this really quickly, but I really want to include the whereas clauses because I knew everybody worked really hard on them. Whereas, pollinators help humans and other animals by pollinating many food sources. And pollinator gardens provide a space that can assist with CO2 emissions while also adding to a beautiful and natural communal area. Whereas, specific pollinator plants are needed for pollinators to reproduce. And only 25% of flowering plants fall into that category. 200,000 animal species are considered actors of pollination and can provide vital resources to plants. Whereas, pollinators improve the quality and quantity of farmers' crop yields. Whereas, one in every three bites of food in over 150 crops are brought to us by pollinators. Whereas, pollination is on the decline as the population of wild bees has declined over 23% in the last decade, affecting the well-being of animals and food production alike. The U.S. economy will suffer as a result with a major drop in food supply in the agricultural industry. Whereas, habitat loss, invasive species, pesticide exposure, and disease pose the biggest threat to pollinators, with domestic honeybee hives decreasing in number by 59% since 60 years ago. Whereas, climate change is a social justice and equity issue disproportionately affecting people of color and people in poverty, thereby exacerbating existing inequities and limiting equality of opportunity. Whereas, in the interest of food stability for future generations, pollinator gardens serve as a great tool. Whereas, pollinator gardens can provide community engagement, learning opportunities, and beautify our communities. Whereas, increasing pollinator gardens and pollinator-friendly plants, especially native plantings within our Pittsburgh gardens and community, whether in areas of former infrastructure or public spaces, can enrich our ecosystems biodiversity and in turn provide platforms for education regarding nutrition, health, and wellness. Whereas, the Youth Steering Committee of Humane Action Pittsburgh has been researching and fundraising for pollinator gardens that help Pittsburgh gardens and ecosystems flourish. And whereas, the council of the city of Pittsburgh is committed to protecting our children and future generations, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 12th, 2024, to be Pittsburgh Pollinator Day in the city of Pittsburgh and encourages all residents to celebrate and promote the importance of pollinators, the creation of pollinator gardens, and the protection of their habitats for the betterment of our community and the environment.
May we have a motion to approve?
So, move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I think that might, sorry, I think that might have been the fastest I ever...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And I just want to give a shout out to the City Farms Project that Councilwoman Coghill and I have been working on for so many years and Kelsey in my office because we have been putting pollinator seeds out in our community gardens that we've been supporting in District Four and in District Seven, including milkweed and coneflower plants. So, where we have community gardens and we've been doing some agroforestry with shrubs and trees, we've been adding the pollinator flowers as well. So, thank you all. So, how do we have, are we going to introduce ourselves? Do we have speakers?
We have two speakers right here.
Awesome. Come on up and congratulate, I'm going to formally present your proclamation to you. There you go. And I'll step away and you can have the microphone.
Hello, all. We're members of the Youth Steering Committee for HAP, and we wanted to extend our gratitude to the city council members for accepting our proclamation today.
Thank you so much and your support and understanding the importance of pollinators and pollinator gardens. They not only beautify communities, but they also help to impact our lives. So, thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for your support. I want to specifically make a shout out to city council members and their respective staff for making this possible today. This proclamation is finally a reality. We've been working a long time on this, oh, for a while now. It's an honor to be up here to talk to you all and what this means to me and my youth peers. So, taking time to recognize the importance that youth and adults can bring together to shed light on environmental sustainability is key and pivotal. Today is a testament to what all stakeholders can do together to ensure, to create, to ensure that creating a path forward to creating a more sustainable globe is a reality. Thank you to our Humane Action Pittsburgh president, Dr. Brian Bond Steel, as well as our executive director, Natalie Alwash. The organization's board of directors, and most importantly, my student peers on the Youth Steering Committee. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, I believe we have three to be read into the record.
Councilman Mosley presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 24th, 2024, to be Nothing Bunt Cakes Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman Mosley also presents, be it, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 24th, 2024, to be Urban Academy Charter School Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And council member, Councilwoman Kale Smith presents, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February, I'm sorry, Friday, March 15th, 2024, to be the Pittsburgh Donnybrook Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve all three proclamations?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All three have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deboration which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. I do not see Dr. Miller. Our next registered speaker is Nancy Ross. Ms. Ross, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record.
My name and what?
Neighborhood for the record.
My name is Nancy Ross. I live in downtown Pittsburgh in the Kaufman's Department Store. And I attend church at First United Methodist Church of Pittsburgh in the Shady Side Friendship Bloomfield Neighborhoods. I'm here today to ask the city to appeal the recent reinstatement of Officer Edmonds, who brutalized a neighbor of ours, resulting in his death. Jim Rogers was a homeless person who attended our Saturday morning First Food and Friends homeless ministry frequently. He was a gentle, friendly, humorous man, and we all miss him. And anyone who has watched the videotape of Officer Edmonds' behavior when he tased Mr. Rogers multiple times should be appalled at that. And we ask that his reinstatement be appealed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, and that will be Alan Gunther.
Good morning. My name is Alan Gunther, and I'm a co-convenor of the Pittsburgh Pieces Possible Coalition. And our group includes members of the Pittsburgh Quakers, Tim Stevens, BPEP, Shayla Holmes of the Coalition Against Violence, Dailen Davis of the Pittsburgh NAACP, Nancy and Tracy Merrick of the First United Methodist Church of Pittsburgh, Lady Barlow of the Christian Associates of Southwest PA, Beth Foringer from Ceasefire PA, and many others. The reason that we're here, our group was formed shortly after Jim Rogers died. And he died five blocks from the First United Methodist Church. And we appreciate Mayor Ganey's efforts to hold police officers accountable for their actions. And we are asking him to continue to seek justice by appealing a recent arbitrator's decision to reinstate Keith Edmonds to the police force. We're asking the mayor to appeal the arbitrator's ruling to the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. According to a 42-minute video released by Federal Court Order, Edmonds used his taser multiple times as he bullied a confused and compliant Jim Rogers, whose compliance was clearly demonstrated when he put his hands up in the air when approached by Edmonds. Here's the heart of the matter. On October 13th, 2021, Rogers borrowed a bike which was for sale. He briefly rode it around the city's Bloomfield neighborhood, and he returned it. For this minor infraction, Edmonds ignored police policy and procedure by repeatedly escalating the confrontation. Before calling for assistance, Edmonds brutally and repeatedly shocked Rogers, a 54-year-old homeless man who had obvious mental and physical health issues. All of us who are signing the letter, and we've already collected 100 signatures in one day, we believe the video clearly shows Edmonds recklessly employed unnecessary force. Having him reinstated to the police force would send a message that officers need not fear consequences, no matter how much they beat up a defenseless person. Edmonds reinstatement would also tell people of color that they need to continue to fear the police. Jim Rogers' death was completely avoidable and unnecessary. His life should not have been taken because he took a bike for a ride and returned it. And all we're saying to Mayor Ganey is that he was right when he fired Keith Edmonds, and we're asking him to appeal that decision to Common Pleas Court for the arbitrator's decision. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sam Schmidt. I am from Bellevue. I'm pulling up my notes here. I just want to say thank you to the last two speakers, and I second everything that they just said. I'm here not to talk about that, though, but something related, and that is, you know, the situation with our homeless community today. So, we're still about three weeks out from a planning commission vote on the tiny home proposal that councilmembers Gross and Coghill have put forward. In the meantime, I want to give you guys some updates from the streets, what's happening. This week, we lost three people to homelessness, three people that I knew and served. Two of those people, I personally am organizing or have organized their memorials because they don't have next of kin. Both of those people were recently kicked out of Second Avenue Commons, exited there for arbitrary reasons that resulted in death for both of them. Tomorrow, the city is going to sweep the Triangle Camp at Grant and Fort Pitt Boulevard. You may be aware of that already. In the one week since that has been announced, the local police have escalated tactics. Anytime an outreach worker gets close to getting someone into housing, the police are down there eavesdropping, looking for any information... Basically, the city is treating these people like cattle. I'm so sorry, everyone.
Need to listen to her and other people.
We're losing people and I just want you to understand the urgency. It's so important. These people have nowhere to go. The city is not offering any meaningful solutions. People are dying and they don't have anyone except people like me to remember them, to take care of them, to help them, to survive. So please, please send this message to the mayor's office and please support any propositions that we have for shelter, please. Overflow is closing. We're about to lose 170-plus beds. That's more people on the street. It's serious, it's urgent. Thank you for letting me go over my time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at Katie Werver's tires. Dr. Miller is not here, but I listen to Dr. Miller whenever he talks. It seems like instones. I want you to understand that I think Dr. Miller would make a better councilman or even a mayor than some of you. And the reason why, Dr. Miller has two daughters like 18 months apart, the same as I had. And if you got two girls that age, they make you care. Do you understand that even when, see, you know, I'm having a hard time when I'm coming down here. I'm getting so I don't want to come in here because I'm being targeted. I have come down and said the different things that happened up there in our building and like Dr. Miller said, Ms. Brown, stop talking because they're not paying you any attention. But I want you to listen to this. It's been a couple of years that I heard Marty Griffin on radio when they were talking about for food bank, that you could get, come in your cars, you get a bag of meat and you get vegetables. Marty Griffin was, oh, come on now, all this ain't necessary. You can go to the food banks. Okay. When he said go to the food bank, last, in October, I mean, in September and October, Katie Werver's, we didn't even have a food bank. When November came, that's for Thanksgiving, you know, they give out turkeys. We had a big block of white fish. This was supposed to be for our, for us to eat. And I said, I don't want that fish. I don't know how to cook it. And the lady said, you gotta cut it while it's frozen, then you can make portions and you can bake it or so on. Okay, so I had like, I have a bag of, I have a little square thing of salmon. It's cut up in block, in pieces. So when I went to the food bank, at first I want you to understand, I get $20 a month worth of food stamps so that this helps me. So when I go there, they give me this, this little bag of fish. And then next it was ground meat and some chicken. So I reached over to get a chicken because I didn't want the ground meat. She said, no, that's all you get. This little bag of meat is supposed to last me or whoever gets it for a whole month. So when you hear that there's food, there's go to the food bank, not in ours, not up there at Katie Werver's. I tried to explain to you that we are not treated the same as other people. Anytime, we didn't get any food stamps, any, any food bank stuff from September, October, even November, where they give out turkeys, a block of white fish, that's all we got. And I really wanted, I had the little package, but I want you to show that, I wish you to see, the little fish is about this big. I'm coming to you to say, you, a lot of you don't think that we deserve to get anything from food banks or even food, but we do. And homeless, being homeless is not, you're not a criminal because you're homeless. You're not a criminal and they shouldn't be made criminals.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. I was at a meeting with Mr. Coghill at the St. Catherine's Church and with all the background noise and my 10-year concussion and traumatic brain stuff, sometimes when there's too much going on, it's like a broken speaker at a Burger King drive-thru. So I don't process. And unfortunately, if I wouldn't have been having that mashed potato brain day, the man that was speaking from Domi, I loved his accent. Forty years ago, if I met him at the Greenery, I would have brought him home. But I couldn't understand a word he said. So I got chewed out by a Catholic priest kindly, sweetly, lovingly, and I'm a Mormon. So he explained to me the reason why we don't need the cross, it will work. Although my plan for coast, my design, it kind of got extended up. Thank you, Anthony. Everyone's mad at me. Social media is, when they're saying, why are they doing it, the lady in the wheelchair. Okay, I'll take that. Homeless. We had a meeting at the BACC meeting, or you know what I'm talking about in Beachview. And there was a lady from the area of the aging that came along. And I'm one of those people that live every day fearing that the roof is going to fall on my head, that I'm going to die alone in my house, that I'm going to lose my house. And this lady solidified, she said, stay in your homes. She couldn't buy property because the LLCs get the list. People are not able to buy homes. She was trying to buy her own mother. This is an area, the aging lady, she couldn't buy her a piece of property to build a house for her family. These LLCs are buying up property and they're not paying taxes and that comes right from across the street last week when I did a whole bunch, 1500 Broadway, I stopped counting at 25 LLCs. No. And churches that do not open their door and they have the capacity, there needs to be a hotline. If that church has a full-blown kitchen, couches, wifi, big screens, and they're not opening up their doors to the seniors, tax them. There has to be something done. That's my thing, but yeah, I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
For report, thank you. Nope.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 237, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with CDW Government LLC for a voice-over Internet Protocol Unifat Communications Platform to implement convergence of systems to support citywide communications at a cost not to exceed $2,100,000 over three years. Bill Number 238, Resolution Amending Resolution 843 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Atlantis IT Consulting Group LLC as needed for an enterprise-wide warehouse supply and inventory management solution by increasing the approved amount by $540,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $770,000 over three years. And Bill Number 258, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Mobility Enhancement District Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit and Expenditure of Such Funds. This fund is for the exclusive use of funding mobility enhancements within the Mobility Enhancement District as defined in Section 550.02 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. And Councilman Mosley, Chair on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 239, Resolution Amending Resolution 15 of 2024, which authorizes a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year 2024 by increasing the authorized amount by $1,352,602 to a new total of $13,975,244 to account for funds omitted from the original resolution. Bill 240, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $500,000 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of bridge maintenance vehicles for use by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account Program. Bill 244, Resolution Amending Resolution 651 of 2023, which provided for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for costs associated with the Charles Anderson Memorial Bridge Project where PWSA would be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreement at an amount not to exceed $15,500 and further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022 effective December 27, 2022 entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Charles Anderson Bridge Tip by $15,500."
Motion to waive Rule 8.
Thank you. On Bill 244, I believe, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 244 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 241, Resolution Amending Resolution 546 of 2023, which authorizes the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for Professional Services relating to leadership development training by increasing the authorized spend by $90,000 for a new total not to exceed costs of $207,336.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 242, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the National Association of City Transportation Officials, Inc., to provide membership dues from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024 not to exceed $33,125. Bill 243, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Mosite Construction Company for costs associated with construction of the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $48,477,777 reimbursable at 100%. Bill 245, Resolution Granting unto 2700 Penn Avenue Partners LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense at no cost to the city two cantilevered upper-level floor plates that will extend into the right of way at 2700 Penn Avenue in the 6th Ward, 1st Council District. Bill 246, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh, the dedication of two portions of East Liberty Boulevard, 125A52 at no cost to the city in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District. And Bill Number 247, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $500,000 to purchase vehicles and equipment that will be used to support Domi's bridge maintenance efforts.
Motion to waive Rule 8 on 2024-0243.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 243 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Non-Used Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 248, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account statewide to provide funding for a voluntary buyout program in the Sawmill Run watershed. The grant proposal includes an ask of $1 million for this stated purpose. And Bill Number 256, Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title II Fiscal, Article IX Property Taxes by creating a new Chapter 268, Real Estate Tax Exemptions for Construction or Adaptive Reuse of Buildings in Downtown Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And for myself, I have one reappointment and then one communication.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 249, Resolution Reappointing Jean Holland Dick as a member of the Planning Commission with the term to expire January 1, 2030.
May I have a motion to either interview or approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bill 254, Communication from Patrick Cornell, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Keith Younger, Donald Myers, and Joseph Rush, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Ronald Romano, and the Department of Innovation and Performance for Ian Fisher, per the Acting Pay Policy revised in June 2018.
And need a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being no unfinished business, that moves us on to reports of committee for file action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 230, Reported Committee on Finance and Law for March 6, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 137, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Risinger, Comer, and Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with the Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $38,068.90 Over One Year. Bill 186, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program, and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Sport Facilities by $113,564.08 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $113,564.08." And Bill Number 187, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of the United States Conference of Mayors for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $19,262.
You have heard the reading and title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Go to clerk, please, take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Bills having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Comer, and Miller LLC for legal services in connection with the police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars and ninety cent over one year. Bill one eighty-six, resolution further amending resolution number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two through Two Thousand and Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program by reducing sport facilities by one hundred thirteen thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and eight cent and increasing park reconstruction by one hundred thirteen thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and eight cent. And bill number one eighty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of the United States Conference of Mayors for one-year membership dues in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Bills having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents bill number two thirty-one, reported to Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill one eighty, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the State Office of the Fire Commissioner for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to support the purchase of emergency rescue equipment. Bill one eighty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the State Office of the Fire Commissioner for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to support the purchase of new replaced equipment for the Bureau of Fire. And bill one eighty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Quick Med Claims LLC for the provision of ambulance billing services to the city of Pittsburgh at a flat percentage rate dependent upon the amounts collected annually for a five-year term.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Ward, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents bill number two thirty-two, reported to Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill one eighty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a utility easement agreement or agreements with Crown Castle, Inc., to access, excavate, bore, and install internet connectivity infrastructure under, across, and over city-owned property located at forty-seven forty Mossfield Street at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Bills haven't received legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bob Sharland, presenting on the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents bill number two thirty-three, reported to Committee on Human Resources for March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill one seventy-nine, resolution amending resolution four oh-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, providing that the city of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with UPMC Mercy in connection with the administration and evaluation of medical examinations and related tests and procedures for the Civil Service Commission's Medical Examination Program for current and prospective employees for employment and promotion and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million two hundred thousand dollars is hereby amended as follows to account for additional costs not to exceed one million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Bills haven't received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents bill number two thirty-four, reported to Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill one forty, resolution amending resolution number seven fourteen of two thousand and twenty-three, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Urban Design Ventures, LLC for services relating to the program design and application development of the city's home ARP application, so as to allocate an additional twenty-nine thousand dollars to Urban Design Ventures, LLC for total costs not to exceed fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements. Bill one forty-one, resolution further amending resolution number eight thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-one, which increased the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget to reflect the receipt of home ARP funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorize the subsequent agreement or agreements by removing the authorization for the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into agreements, contracts, or utilize existing agreements.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion?
They're all right together.
Yes.
They just read it. Mr. Chair, I've lost myself. Did you just read the bill with the allocation for the home ARP funds?
Yes, that is bill one forty-one.
One forty-one, I thought you just read it. So, yeah, I know that I have come, and I think Councilman Coghill does too. So, we deliberated last week over the kind of allocations of these funds that are specifically the home ARP funds that are for homelessness. And we heard both in a briefing and at the table that they are to be, can be used for emergency shelter, specifically non-congregate shelter, that they can be used for kind of supportive services, home, like, rehousing, social services for people who are currently outdoors, and for a variety of other purposes with the specific goal of helping people who are homeless be in housing. This week, I voted, I voted in support provisionally last week, but I do have concerns that the, that we're working on two separate tracks and that we should not be, right? That the administration was working on outreach around these funds and gathering input from social service providers around these funds while council had a concurrent committee for nine months on solutions to homelessness. And there was no communication between those, City Department and the council committee, and there should have been. And I think I've got a commitment at the table last week that the remainder of the funds that are unallocated, some one point five, maybe one point eight million, will be coordinated with council in figuring out how to do those appropriations. So, I'm glad to have that commitment, but I think, as we heard public comment earlier today, that we could have already been housing people if we had both moved more quickly on allocating these funds and were not allocating this six million to projects that will still take several years before a single person gets housed. So, I think that was a tragedy that could have been avoided if we had better communication, but I look forward to making sure that we have the most expedient allocation of the remainder of the funds to make sure that we house as many people as we can as soon as we can. And that, you know, so the difference between permanent housing, as I spoke about last week, is that you don't have kind of daily supportive services. And the rapid rehousing that we're talking about is getting people indoors, but also in a situation where they have privacy, autonomy, but also the supportive services that they need to get their lives back. And that's what the federal government gave us these funds for. So, I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I think she covered most of, you know, my concerns and problems with the allocation of this money. And I want to be clear that, you know, throughout the process, as the councilwoman just said, while we were meeting, presenting our homeless committees plan, that was myself, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Strasburger, and Councilwoman Wilson, not one time did this administration share with us their plans to allocating this money. Now, for me, it's just a matter of respect, right? We're there talking about, you know, coming up with plans and, and concepts that we've spent over eight months developing, and not one time did they say, oh, by the way, what about this money? You think this might help or help us out with this, or at least, at least have that conversation with us? So, for me, that was an insult. I very much disagree in the way they allocated this money, and I will say, I think the press, Olga George, I guess she had a press secretary, I'm not sure, but last week she commented that they overcommunicate with council. Well, we looked, I look back in my records, I can't speak for other members, but there was one email inviting us to a public hearing on the allocation of this money. And we all know at a public hearing, we don't allocate money. We don't talk about that. There were ample opportunities and ample meetings with, whether it be OCHS, whether it be Public Safety Director Schmidt, Lisa Frank, Jake Pollock, you name it. They've had so many opportunities to discuss this with us. To, you know, and, and the beat-all is this, they comes to us when it's too late to change the allocation. So, to me, it's the first time I'll ever not be voting for federal money that's granted to us, but I don't like the way they allocated. It could have been done in a much better way, much more efficient way, and I won't be voting for it today in hopes that, you know, I'd rather see another city use this money to help get the people that are living off the street, off the street. So, that's what I feel like this money could have been used for. We have one and a half million dollars. I hope this administration will communicate that with us. But that's all for me, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I actually, I'm so torn over this, like, a lot of things that come over here anymore. My concern is with the grant funding, as always. I, I think that we need to know who this funding is going to, what they're expected to do from it, with it, but I do know that we have received some information last week. And, and, you know, I really want to see something quickly happen for the homeless population. We keep hearing over and over again about this issue, and we keep putting money towards something that's long-term and not something immediate, not, not some immediate changes. And there are people crying out for help, both the, not only the homeless advocates, but people all around the city are crying out for help. And I feel like we're totally just doing whatever we want to do and ignoring some of that. And I'm not convinced that this is the only way these dollars can be spent. I know the administration told us that, but has anybody verified that from the actual federal government, or are we just taking everybody's word for it? Because if we're going to do that, there have been several times that we've been given misinformation, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's intentional, but sometimes people think that there's certain ways things, things are supposed to be, and they're not always that way. And I think as far as the disrespect for council, I think that, that's something that happens when you have five members that just do whatever they're, you know, whatever they want to be, have done. We really need to work together as a body, and I think that we have been doing that a little bit, and I do, but I do want to advocate this part. I do sometimes think leadership will meet with the administration, say, you know, advocate for council in certain ways that maybe we don't do publicly, but sometimes, I know that with, when you were in, you know, the, or the Finance Chair, and Reverend Burgess and I were in leadership, we would meet in every, you know, I think it was every week at first, and then every month, and then, you know, kind of broke off a little bit. But, but we would meet and advocate for council behind closed doors. We didn't want to, we didn't want to have a battle out at the table. So, I, I want to say that just because we're not seeing it doesn't mean it's not happening. So, with that said, I want to vote for this today because it's my understanding this is the only way the dollars can be used at this time, but I am really struggling with it because I don't like, I'm, I'm just going to say, coming, going for it. I think Councilwoman Warwick said it best last week when she said, we need to know what the plan is. We need to see it. And so, I'm going to say, and I'm going to make this comment right now, I'm not voting for any more dollars to go to anything unless we see in advance what the plan is. And if not, then I'm going to question council members that continue to vote for it as well. We need to know what the plan is. We need to know what we're doing with the homeless population. We need what we're doing for affordable housing. We've spent a ton of money on affordable housing over the past few years. There should be no more issue with housing in the city of Pittsburgh. There's been millions of dollars spent, and it's time to start seeing the results of some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'll simply add to the point of, is this the only way? It depends on what you're describing as the. So, the federal government did have stipulations on how those dollars can be spent.
Did you see this?
Some of which, yes. Some of which Councilwoman Gross went into. The plan that we're enacting is what the community that services the homeless says this is the best way, of the options that you were given, this is the best way to utilize those dollars. So, I'm, I'm not going to...
Do you want me to say something back to them?
Feel free. I'm just saying, I won't pretend to be in the space of servicing the homeless population, but those that were consulted, they said, of the choices that you have to expend these dollars, we recommend going down this road because this is where the bottleneck lies with getting people into housing.
So, what I would now want to know are any of those people getting some of this grant funding? What I'd want to know now is what exactly was presented to them and, and who all was at that table? That's what I want to know, because now I'm thinking maybe I'm not going to vote for it, because I've sat here time after time where organizations have came down, come down here, fought and said that they needed money for something, affordable housing, there was the Housing Opportunity Fund, there was all sorts of, the Land Bank, and everybody always says they're not going to get any di, any money from it. They're not benefiting from this in any way, and every time, those groups are the ones benefiting from it. So, I don't want to be told by somebody who is going to benefit from this. I want to, I want to be told from somebody who, who understands it, yes, but not who's going to be a direct beneficiary. Thank you.
So, to Councilwoman Gross's point, those who be direct recipients of the one point five has not been determined yet, and that will have to come before this body.
So, right, but when you say it has to come before this body, I want things to come before us with a conversation, not just come before us at the last minute when we can't, we have no choice but to vote something up or down. We're either voting to help homeless people, or we're not. We're either voting to help businesses, or we're not. We're either voting to help kids, or we're not. I wanted something to have, I want us to be able to have that conversation. I think we all want to see the homeless population helped. I think every one of us cares about the people that are struggling in Pittsburgh, and we do listen intently to what people say when they come down here to speak, but that mean, that doesn't mean we don't want to also be part of those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilman Mosley?
Thank you for engaging me in that.
First round, Councilman Mosley then.
Yeah, I want to thank my colleagues for their comments, and I do think that, you know, moving forward is important, that there is a true spirit of collaboration, you know, as we solve these larger issues. I will be in support of this legislation today. As many know, I'm, I'm truly the rookie at the table, even my good friend, Councilman Sharland, has been on the floor for a number of years before me, so I'm still, you know, learning a lot about, you know, the protocols and, and the culture here on the fifth floor, and I really, you know, want to thank, you know, all my, all my members for, for being mentors in a variety of different ways, and, and clearly there is, you know, a sentiment growing, you know, amongst our body that is a sense of frustration around what was perceived by some of my members that have a lot more experience on the floor than me that, you know, there hasn't been the level of communication that they would feel is requisite, you know, of the, of two co-equal branches of government. So, you know, I do hope that, you know, moving forward, we can, you know, foster, you know, a spirit of collaboration, you know, where all my colleagues feel like they're a part of these discussions, that we can, you know, weigh in in earlier phases of the process, so to speak, so that, you know, moving forward, it doesn't, you know, feel like there is a level of consternation, even though there is, as I always say, as, as a political science major, you know, there's always a natural tension that has to exist between the legislative branch and the executive branch, and I think, you know, that's what we're, you know, experiencing right now, and that's the way the drafters of this great democracy intended it to be. So, I thank everyone for their comments. I will be, you know, in support of this today, but do hope, you know, as we move on in the future, you know, we can foster a spirit of collaboration where all my colleagues feel like they're a part of the process.
Thank you. Sec, Councilman Wilson, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just want to say, I appreciate your, your comments, Councilman Mosley, and I just want to let everyone know that, you know, I'm going to bring up the issues that people are, feel like they're faced with, with the administration, that people have been expressing when we meet with the administration next time, which will be today, so happy will be today. So happy to have that conversation and make sure that your voices are heard. But I just want to say, on a personal level, I like the plan, and that's why I'm voting for it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
Since we're all talking, I just, I do want to, I think I've said to most members already, so there was some legislation that we passed not too long ago, requiring that we receive notification of grant applications. And we are actually just, you know, to avoid this type of situation. And I, and I think it's good for council and for the administration. We're going to amend that. We're working on the details, but to, so that council actually approves grant applications above $250,000 that are not, for, for things that are not previously indicated in the budget. I think that going forward, that will, you know, it'll clarify for everyone, because on the, on the one hand, right, it'll make sure that, because this is funding, right, it'll make sure that council sees what we are, you know, when we're asking for large amounts of funding, what we plan to use it for. So on the one hand, it'll be, you know, clarity for council. And on the other hand, for the administration, you know, once they have, you know, because this grant processes are very long, whatever. And so then, you know, a year down the road, two years down the road, when they receive their grant, and then it comes back to council for the final, you know, exchange of funds, there's no question about who saw it, who didn't, who was notified or not, right? Like, it will have come before council, we will have voted on it. And then, at that point, at the end, at the end game, when it's time to get the money, it should be fairly straightforward.
Thank you, Councilman Charland.
Thank you, Council President. I have, I have three points here. First of all, I want to, want to thank the comments from Councilman Mosley there, but I am very much still figuring out how things are working over here. Councilwoman Coghill is helping me turn my microphone on, and I seem to not be able to figure out when I'm supposed to hand over papers to the president. That being said, I think the crux of what we're talking about today is why I'm, I'm so upset with this bill, and I will be voting for it today. But council allocates money. And when things come to us with our hands tied of this is how you're going to allocate it, and if you don't allocate it this way, we're going to have to go back to the, the process and delay everything, that doesn't allow us to do our job. And that is something that I have, I have a real problem with on a fundamental level of, of the separation of, of powers between the branches of government here, that if, if something comes to us, and it's either, it's either essentially take it or leave it, take it how we want, want you to take it or leave it, then we end up in a situation here where we're not able to do what the charter empowers us to do. So I, you know, I'll be voting for it today because I understand the need, but I really dislike the way that that was done. My third point there, and I appreciate Councilman Wilson bringing up that, that our concerns will be brought up to, brought to the administration today. And I, and I also really want to thank Councilman Wilson for keeping me in the loop as best, as best he can. He, you know, he has been, you know, a great mentor and a good friend here in my first couple of months in office. That being said, I, I expect that the administration will be reaching out to us and not just to certain members of council, but to council as a whole. I mean, I've told most of you here that are listening, I have yet to be reached out to the administration on anything. I have yet to be engaged on any issues here. I brought my concerns to them, but I have yet to have any productive discussions with the administration here. And I hope that going forward, the administration is not just talking with certain members of council, but talking with council as a body and, and all nine members that were duly elected to do a job here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Coghill.
Look, I'm having problems too, Bobby. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to reiterate again, what really bothers me about this particular allocation of this money is, again, we were meeting on a regular basis while this administration was deciding how to allocate this money. We're meeting on a regular basis about the homeless situation in Pittsburgh, right? In every conversation, it always comes up financials. Who's going to help pay for it? We always revert back to the county, not knowing at the time that I felt was being withheld from our committee of four council members. So, and I want to remark to, you know, what I think Mr. Pollock said, and what you had just said, Mr. President, as far as the allocation of that money. In no way was, was I implying, or I don't think any other members here, that this money should be used for tiny managed villages, okay? And I think that's kind of what Mr. Pollock was remarking to yesterday. It could have been used for many, many different solutions, okay? I'm just looking for it to be used for an immediate purpose that we need right now, as we're, you know, decommissioning camps. So where they're going to go, as you heard Sam speak today, they're just going to go to another corner in the City of Pittsburgh, and we're not going to have the finances. This money was gifted to us. We should have been using it for immediate need, not for emergency rental units that are going to be done three or four years from now. We have an immediate need on, at our hands. And to not use this money properly is just a crime to me. One other thing, you know, Councilwoman Gross, I think, offered to help me with the post-agenda with the homeless. I want to see this administration's plan. I have yet to see any plan from them, okay? We've come up with a body with four or five different concepts at least. I have yet to see any common sense plan from this administration as to what they're going to do, other than this, other than allocating this money and was done irresponsibly, without any say-so from council, who has been working diligently on this for two years. So it's irresponsible, and to me, it's, quite frankly, it's an insult. So that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just to respond to his one point about the homeless camp directly here on grant, and first, part of the reason why it's been there so long is because we didn't have the beds to place those individuals. And that we, my understanding, based upon my office's work, Ricky Moody's work, is that we finally have identified the beds necessary to be able to decommission that, which is why the process will begin. So the, the hope is that they're just going to go, sorry, that they're just going to go to another corner, but rather than actually go to, into a shelter.
So they've all been offered beds then?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kelsmith?
Yeah, I'm just going to wrap it up, just to say thank you to everyone. I know we all want to work together to figure this out. And I do appreciate that, you know, council's leadership will meet and, and advocate for council. But I also want to say, I do think that sometimes we do get, when Director Pollock was there, he, he made sure we got information. And I think, you know, some of that has been that there's been a little bit of change, you know, first temporarily, but I think that's part of it. But maybe, hopefully, as we move forward, we'll get some of those, you know, as things, you know, settle and things, people return to work, we get some of that information again, like we, like we'd had. Because we did have conversations before, and, and so some of that information was coming. And I do think that sometimes we take our concerns to the administration and, you know, individually. And so I do want to say, I don't want to act like there was been no communication, but, you know, I think for this reason, there was, there was an absence of an employee, and that's why.
Thank you. Any further, any further discussion? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All those in favor, all those in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Abstain.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstention.
The bill, having received the legally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith, presenting on the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 235, reported to Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for March 6, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 185, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Department of Human Services, OCR, Key Service Corps located at 1 Smithfield Street, Floor 1, with regard to the 2022 AmeriCorps Summer Program in the amount of $12,000 for match payment for AmeriCorps members who worked during the summer of 2022 with the Department of Parks and Recreation.
You have heard the reading in the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally, legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Carris Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 236, reported to Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for March 6, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 133, resolution providing for the execution of a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the performance of certain work in connection with the home ARP, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $6,58,607.63. Bill 183, ordinance amending to Pittsburgh City Code Title V, Article 7, Chapter 541, general parking regulations, by amending language to Section 541.09, Public Parking Authority of Pittsburgh, to allow the issuance of parking tickets both in person and through the mail.
You've heard the reading in the titles of the bill. Is there any discussion?
Just want to thank the Parking Authority again for ticket by mail. It's crucially important in our district, especially as we come up to St. Patrick's Day weekend here. These, these kind of implements from the Parking Authority are going to be really helpful. And I want to thank Councilman Wilson for, for kind of leading the charge here in the Parking Authority.
This is the 6.5.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
No on Bill 133, aye on the others.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes on Bill 183. Eight ayes, one no on Bill 133.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. We do have meeting announcements. Council Standing Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, March 13th at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. Call the clerk's office at 412-255-22138. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 a.m. Also, tomorrow, Wednesday, March 13th, with sessions at 1:30 and 2:30. Council will hold briefings on the 90-day report detailing the proposed use of the Affordable Housing Bond Funds in accordance with Bill 1612. Councilman, let me, let me finish, and then. And on Thursday, March 14th, at 11:00 a.m., council will hold a cablecast post-agenda at the request of councilperson Bob Charland, relative to the broken zoning code. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to ask about our calendar coming up, are we having any double sessions on Mondays? Or I thought, some members thought we weren't, I wasn't, I couldn't find it on our kind of internal Outlook calendar. And so I didn't know if you had those public announcements coming up.
I don't believe so.
Typically, they're around, Easter's not until March 31st this year. Typically, around Easter, in the spring, we have.
I think there's one in April coming up.
Is it the, I hope it's not the day after Easter?
No.
Okay, just checking.
And just to reiterate, because members really cared about this, we have briefings on the 90-day report out for the bond, for the Affordable Housing Bond tomorrow, at 1:30 and 2:30.
The briefings, sorry.
The briefings, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
On the report that council members asked for, and how to expend the dollars. If there anything else, members?
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. President, that's for the 62.5 million dollar bond?
30 million.
Oh, well, yeah, right. Well, right.
Oh, but, yes.
Right, okay, good enough. And what time was that?
1:30 and 2:30.
Good deal, thank you.
If nothing else, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Summon.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.